All right, we will call the Planning Commission meeting of June 2nd to order at 7:30. My wife for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Belkey here. Patterson here. Conan?
Here.
Brand?
Here.
Lumbow?
Here.
Patterson? Here. Okay, before we get started, we'll again introduce that this is our planner from McKenna, Brian Keesey. Okay. All right, so he's gonna help us with our discussions this evening. All right. We are first on approval of agenda. I make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the approval of meeting minutes for May 3rd. Where did I just set it? We have quite a few of little notes that I made over this one. I just wanna go over those a little bit first. Under the... Well, let's start right in the beginning. Chairwoman sounds a little odd to me. I don't know why. It just sounds a little more politically correct to go chairperson, but it makes no difference either way. It just, to me, sounded a little odd. But when we're doing the roll call and who's here and absent, a little more than the last name. We have Jo Edere for NEMC, is how she should've been listed.
Okay.
And the spelling error on the site plan for West Main, not West Mail.
Okay.
And in that same one, the last sentence says applicant has not made any modifications to building interior or exterior, nor has no intentions to. Sounds...
That should've been any.
Yeah.
So how that one got through, I'm not too sure.
Okay. And under the bylaws and the ordinance amendment discussion, there was no vote put down. Put down there. It said who made the motion, who seconded, but the vote was not listed. That it was all ayes or any were opposed. So we need to make sure that gets added to the ending of each one.
Okay, so on both, I'm just making sure I got that on my notes correctly.
Bylaws and ordinance amendment discussion.
So we're gonna put on those two items?
Yes, you just like you did up here under the site plan, down at the very last paragraph. You put that the motion was presented by Belkey, seconded by Grant. It was all ayes. We all agreed. But in the bylaws and the ordinance amendment, you only put down who made the motion and who seconded, not what the vote was. Which we were all agreed, but...
Okay.
Just to state it in there would be better.
Okay.
And then it is a public hearing, not a public meeting. That's also in the ordinance amendment discussion. June 7th public meeting is what was listed in there.
Okay, are we talking about DDA amendment bills?
No, up in ordinance amendment discussion?
Oh, yeah, one, two...
You're up. One from where you just were.
Okay. I'm just making, I'm making the corrections as we're going over the reasons why, so...
Yeah, where it says June 7th public meeting, that should be a public hearing.
Hearing.
And then the last thing I noticed was under Chair Report. I wanted to be sure to thank you. You put in the correct address where I read my notes that meeting and had incorrect adjustments. You did correct that for me.
Fair enough.
No.
I have a... May I ask you? I think that we should remove the excused Conan from the roll call because that wasn't mentioned at the meeting. He may very well have done that, but you didn't say that at the meeting, so it really shouldn't be in the minutes.
If I can address that one?
Okay.
Yeah, the reason it was marked on as it was excused was because it was explained in a previous meeting that if Mr. Conan would not be here, that was the reason why he would not be here, was because of his prior engagement.
As always, it is discussed prior, but we will make sure to mention that in the meetings from this point forward.
So it wasn't as if it was totally, totally unknown. He had mentioned in a previous meeting. I recall that from a previous meeting, and I had that reflected in the notes for the meeting prior.
Okay, anything else in the meetings minutes? So if we can...
What are we, everything you said, or only the typographical errors?
You made amend, you made the changes as we went through them anyway, didn't you?
Yeah, I was jotting some stuff down. I was just curious. Did you wanna just make the motions as amended?
As amended.
Wanted to do specific?
Yeah, she needs to know what exactly.
Not in the motion, but when I, when I submit them and I put them online, it'll be lined out and in red what was amended, but only are you doing just the main, the any, the all ayes, the hearing, or are you doing the chairwoman, the everything else?
The chairwoman was just my personal.
That's all I'm asking.
So that's, that's...
I'm okay with the correction for Main Street. Any intention, all ayes, and the hearing. Unless any other member has any objections to that, they wanna make any additional changes.
Oh, I guess it's approved.
I wasn't answered.
So that takes it up changes.
Do we have a lister? She is the treasurer. We don't have a lister. Okay, all right.
Yeah, that was the only reason why I didn't put that on there.
Right, I just, I couldn't, I guess if I would've just opened up my notes, I would've seen that we didn't do that. But I just wondered why we never noticed that. Okay, so...
So that file, did you want me to make the changes and send it over, or just 'cause the file was unlogged?
No, I will use the one you sent, and I'll line it out, put it in red, so it shows what was actually amended.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good. I just needed to know what we were voting on.
All right, fair enough. I have nothing else. I want to see anyone else?
Okay, so we'll need a motion. I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
I am saying...
Maybe minutes. So we are now on the site plan of 23051 East Main, the Tiger Den Cafe. And we have owners and operators here this evening to kinda discuss a few things with us. You guys wanna go ahead and introduce yourselves, and we'll start there?
Sure, I'm Dan. This is my wife Meredith. As we stated before, we just moved into the area in December. We bought a house in Allentown, just off Hopper Road, off Cape Town. So we have three little ones, seven, well, to be seven, three and two. So we're gonna be here for a while. We just figured we started business in the community so we could bring the kids up in the community and really be part of it, so...
And this is to be a coffee cafe and snacks.
Coffee shop cafe. We also really wanna cater to the kids, too, to give a good, safe environment for after school. You know, have good prices and deals for them. You know, being parents, you want somewhere safe for kids to go. Not that the area's not safe, but just a good place. You know, we also noticed that there are no coffee shops. We just have some gas stations. Sometimes the hours fluctuate, and I've seen in the iHeart made-up page that people really want their coffee. So we thought it might be a good idea to bring to the community.
Is this gonna be like similar to like a Starbucks or something?
Not as fancy.
Yeah, like specialty coffees?
Specialty coffees or drip coffees.
Like, you know, scones and...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, muffins or coffee cake or something?
Parfaits, some fruit.
You're gonna have sundaes and things?
I don't think...
We haven't decided on that. We do know that...
You mean cooking like hamburgers or...
Not hamburgers and things like that. We don't really wanna be open for the dinner crowd. We want more of breakfast and lunch, maybe some quick breakfast sandwiches and things like that. Quick foods, so it's not gonna be a service. We're not gonna be waiting tables. There'll be tables for people to sit and to, you know, hang out and gather, but it won't be a restaurant. It'll be more of a grab and go. Grab some fruit, grab parfaits, grab muffins, cookies, breakfast sandwiches. We haven't 100% put out the menu yet, some cookies, cake pops, little things kids will like, things like that, too.
And the food, how will the food be delivered?
We want to source a lot of the local fruits and things like that from our local community. We think that's important to make sure we're supporting. And then we will have a couple ovens in the back. We won't have any stove tops, fire suppression systems and things like that we're not putting into the building. So we're doing a couple ovens so we can freshly bake those things, and we might outsource some of those from local bakeries and things like that, too. We're trying to really, the cost goes higher when you're outsourcing those things. So we wanna keep things lower for people, too, because we don't wanna be extremely high priced. So we're trying to work out those details. So some will be in-house, some will be out.
And the drawing was perfect. This is exactly what we discussed, so that's, that's great.
This is our first time, so we really have no idea. We're just, we're waiting it.
No, definitely can view these a lot better, and your dimensions are there. Do we have any questions? Board members?
I have none.
Well, I have a question about the sign. I'm assuming that there'll be a suffered sign application, sign permit application and all that, 'cause we don't have all the information now?
Yeah, so with the owner of the building, we still have to work out details as far as what we can do to the outside of the building. We just got our lease to be able to read over and everything, so we have to clarify some stuff with him. So there'll be a different application to get the sign up, once we figure out that stuff.
I'm assuming you'll take all that stuff off and wanna put some...
That's kind of the details we have to work out with him. Again, with just getting the lease, it says some things that we have to clarify. And then, well, that's our plan, is to take some of the butterflies and other things down and then put a board on.
And there's multiple signs up there, so we do have one clean-looking sign, maybe something on the window. Like, we put nothing set in stone. We haven't, like we said, we haven't signed our lease yet, so we're waiting until we got the approval before we could do any of that. We will look at all the ordinances for the signs to make sure, and then we'll submit for approval.
Yeah, question, just call the office.
Okay. Perfect.
I already want to go.
We're so excited.
Sounds like a great idea.
So we're not having this out there. We have to restate it in the... All right, well, I have nothing further. Anybody else?
So exactly how would we word that with the sign issue, to be determined in a future meeting?
Does it come here? It'll do it through the building permit application.
Okay.
Yeah, they still gotta, they still gotta go with the ordinance, so...
Okay.
They don't have to come back to you. They'll just fill out the building permit application with the office.
Okay, I was just curious, I mean, who's gonna be?
I would make that part a motion.
It also needs to include that food items and any restrictions, qualifications, everything, has to go through the health department as well.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Not yet. We're waiting till we get your approval, and then we're signing our lease at the end of the week. We just got paperwork yesterday, but the landlord said that we could wait until we had your approval before we did any of that, and then as soon as we sign that, we'll be with the health department.
Because if it goes to the health department, my experience with that, having gone through this, is that they're gonna make you put in, if you apply for a fixed food license, you're gonna have to have plans and electrical, and it may, it may be that this ends up changing based on something like, and the requirements for bathrooms and all that, they're gonna set that for you based on capacity. So that might change that. Does you have to come back then to come in for site plan information changes?
We do anticipate it changing somewhat, a little bit, not a ton, but we just walked through twice. So we're just trying to put what we can on paper, and we know there will be some kind of changes.
According to your ordinance, if you approve the site plan, the building inspector can approve any modifications to the site.
Well, now you need a motion.
We do.
'Cause I'm still working on how to word it out.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna attack this. Want me to try it?
Yeah.
Sure. The provisions are about the sign, and is that the only one?
Uh, the food needs to go through county health department.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the site plan with provisions of proper signage and Compton County Health Department compliance.
For?
There we go. For. 23051 East Main Street. Go for it.
That was fast.
You wanna read that back?
Are we covering all the resources with that?
Didn't I get it?
Did I get it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
How long do you think, of course, until you meet with the health department, see what they say? Do you have a timeline?
My goal originally was about September. I mean, that's when we do everything in the interior. We have to get all the equipment and everything together. So by September, late as October would be...
Well, if you guys wanna have, not, no pressure, but if you wanna have a bang-up opening weekend, be ready by fair time. Just, I know, that's tight.
That's hot. There's no, but, yeah, it would be amazing.
I'm excited. I'd, you know, I'd be lying if I said I had a thousand things like that, like, what a good idea. There's a coffee shop.
Unbelievable. They say in Chicago, say money.
We'll just need some signatures from you guys, and we'll be all set. I thought we had one there.
Was it too painful?
No!
Oh, yes, I forgot about you.
I had one set in there, but I lost it.
So we're at best as family, right?
Yes, we're in Allentown, but we school choice our pickup.
Here underneath mine?
You can pick up a bus from there, too, when you send them in person. You can just drive right over to the school choice bus stop.
Yes, we have that in the morning spread this year. So weird.
I'm on Hough at Riley Center.
Oh, I...
In district, so I can get a bus to my driveway with people who are just out of town like that.
And then this is not copy, so sign it or don't sign it, that's...
Honestly, at some point, every morning.
She can bring the coffee.
You know, I'd rather say as hard as I'm already there.
I'll put you on the best.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you all so much.
Have a good evening.
Okay, we are now on the ordinance amendment discussion for the used variance and transitional overlay district, which is the reason why we asked for it to come tonight. So let's turn it over to him.
Sure, happy to be here, and I don't get up here enough. I was working back probably once or twice a year. It's all like, I'm visiting you guys, so I'm happy to be back. I understand, so Natalie was here a couple months ago to introduce the proposal, the proposed amendments, and wanted a bit more explanation and kind of background. And I think one of the things that, that I'd like to hit on a little bit tonight is the master plan itself, and then how that transitions into these new tools, which is what I'm, what we're really proposing here, two new tools that will help us address some of the unique buildings, unique structures and uses that we have kind of on the outskirts of downtown and encroaching into downtown, and playing that transitional role between the residential districts and our, and Main Street. And so the current master plan, which is 2012, makes reference all the way back to the downtown plan. That was, I believe, '03 was the year on that. But it, it talks a lot about flexibility in dealing with those uses, and it recognizes that we have buildings and properties that don't necessarily align with the long-term vision here. But it talks a lot about, let's be flexible, let's work with those landowners, and let's, let's make use of what we have, the infrastructure we have, and encourage small businesses as best we can. The current zoning ordinance is very black and white in terms of how it deals with those existing structures. And it provides no flexibility for the types of uses that are there, or the types of development that we might wanna see, or the types of improvements that we wanna see to properties to make them a better fit as that transitional function. And so with that background, if you have any questions, by all means, jump in and stop me. But with that background in place, we wanna introduce the used variance as well as this transitional overlay district. And the used variance is really, let's deal with what we have that we can't really envision. And these are the kind of incremental changes that get presented to us that say, you know, reoccupying an existing industrial business. While there's not a ton of leeway in the ordinance, we might need to allow for some discretion there. But it also recognizes in those six bullet points that we have a whole lot of criteria that the city council need to use to, to really use this tool in such a limited capacity. The reason that used variances are pretty limited in use across Michigan, it's both cities, villages, and very few townships can actually use that mechanism. But the hope is that your zoning districts provide the right mixture of uses that you want in a specific area. Where the zoning district can't anticipate any of these industrial buildings or things that we wanna transition out, that's where the used variance really comes into play. But, you know, we wanna make sure that we're limiting these to instances where you literally can't use the building unless it's for an industrial use, in a lot of cases. I'm gonna keep referencing industrial use, 'cause that's really where I envision this is gonna be used. We wanna make sure that there are physical conditions that can't be remedied in any meaningful capacity. And one of the things that I wanna make certain is that these are physical conditions to the property, and they're not things that can be overcome with some financial investment. You know, if, if grading is an issue, that's something that, that can't be overcome with money, right? Right here, you're kind of limited to the topographic situation. But things like, well, the building doesn't match the character that we want. Well, the reality is, if you throw a little bit extra money towards that investment, you're gonna start hitting some of the criteria that we want. And, well, some property owners don't like that as a, as a means that we're not gonna consider. We really shouldn't be taking any monetary investments into these use decisions. The next is the character of the neighborhood. Obviously, you can't, you can't anticipate every minute piece of property in a zoning ordinance, and so that's where this is kind of a subjective criteria that the village should consider. The fourth is that it's not self-created. It's not something that the current property owner has instigated, but also previous land use decisions haven't created these types of situations. Number five is, we wanna treat this as we would treat any other property within the village. We wanna give it the same amount of discretion. We don't wanna appear favorable to a particular landowner, but we want to be fair, is really what that criteria is. And then finally, number six is our health, safety, and welfare criteria, which is what all of our land use and zoning ordinances should be striving for, is protecting those elements for all of our residents and landowners and things like that. And so we wanna give some examples in this ordinance of things that can be used as, not necessarily a trade-off, but something that can minimize concerns as we consider alternate uses. So that's kind of the big picture overview of the used variance. Again, we want it to be limited in use as much as we can, and we wanna deal with current existing problems.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
It says in the zoning ordinance that our, the village policy is that the ZVA can't look at used variances?
That's correct.
And I'm wondering, why is that, and why do we, is it in the best interest to rescind that? And, I mean, if that's our policy, can we change our policy? Why do, why do we wanna give this to council? Why, why, what's the recommendation for having council act as a ZVA rather than having the ZVA do a used variance?
I'll say municipalities do it both ways. So it's not a standard that the ZVA is always the body that's considering used variances. The reason that some municipalities will have their elected body do it rather than an appointed body is that those are, those are elected officials. They're the voice of the residents in a lot of cases. And so that's the thought process behind using that body when it comes down to...
So do they have, they have one body that does all of the ZVA work, then? So their ZVA is actually comprised of just council people, elected people? So that those people are then invested with all the power and authority of the ZVA? And the, and the normal ZVA people who may be there now are no longer there. Council has that role and those responsibilities and all that power and authority?
Uh, yes, that's a common way to do it, yeah.
Okay, so there would be, no longer be the ZVA that we have now. There would be, council would be the acting ZVA, and they would do all ZVA business?
Not the way that I have this proposed. The way I have this proposed is that the ZVA would still consider all of the zoning interpretations that are brought to them, and they would still handle all of the dimensional variances. This would just be use-specific.
What's the, what's the recommendation for doing it that way?
The real rationale, I would say, is the uses are going to be, when a municipality issues a used variance, that runs with the land forever, right? So that use is allowed to continue until conditions change. And I like having that authority within the elected official's hands. I think that's a positive way to handle that. Whereas dimensional variances are a little bit easier, or a little bit less, I'll say less impactful over the course of development than the actual use itself. And then also, it's very easy for a ZVA, an appointed body, to make an interpretation, an informed interpretation about the zoning ordinance also. So I think that there's a pretty distinct line in terms of, in terms of the uses being very, very important, and a mixture of the elected officials being the voice of the people in a lot of cases, right?
I have a question. You said used variance runs with the land, so sort of like special approval land uses?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay, and on a special approval land use, Planning Commission can stipulate that it's only good for that particular applicant?
They can, yeah.
And should the applicant change, then the special approval no longer applies? Would that be the same, could that same hold true on used variance?
Yes, the way that I have this laid out is that you, the council could impose those types of reasonable conditions.
Didn't they cause a problem in the past?
What caused a problem in the past?
The run with the land argument?
Is that it was unaware that that's how they went. It was under, it was presumed that they only went with the person, not with the land, and that's where the mistake came in. But the last several SALUs have had conditions put on them to only go to the applicant to get rid of that confusion.
Kinda what got all this going is we got like five or six buildings in town. Now, these towns, these buildings have been there three, four master plans down the road before there was ever a master plan. The buildings that were built in the 40s and 50s, my best guess. I was raised here, and they were all here. I was raised here and they were all here then. But we got buildings such as where Boling Metal is, where Park Electric is. I do remember the building of Larry's Garage over here. You've got like a Paterex building there, I can't remember that one. And the old Armada Oil and Gas, which is owned by Mark Giselle. But those buildings have been here forever. And those Bowleys and Park Electric haven't been a problem because one owner, you know, they've done the same thing there forever and they're like grandfathered in. Where in the case of Mark's building, he's had numerous businesses, so he's had to come here. And what I like is the idea of this overlay district, that it gives some flexibility because we need to be flexible. We can't have these building owners say, now you can't put anything in there because you're not far enough away from adjoining buildings. And I'm pretty sure that all the owners of the homes that are close to these buildings were not there when those buildings were built. So that they knew.
When they purchased their home.
Yeah, when they purchased that home, that these buildings were close to them. Not that we don't have to look at what kind of application, but, you know, Mark's building's always gonna be too close to that one house, for sure. I don't know if Paterex building is too close to that house, it very well may be. Park Electric may very well be. But these are things we've got to, that's what we're trying to address here. So we don't have a problem every time.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I haven't gotten into the TOD yet, but I think it's going to be a tool that you'll find very beneficial moving forward and that you can have a discussion with either the current property owner or somebody who's looking to purchase that property and say, you know, we want it to be, we wanna recognize the past, right? We wanna recognize that these are industrial buildings. We also wanna be fair and recognize that our list of permitted uses might not give you the best chance to redevelop that in any meaningful way. And it also is not something that we want to pigeonhole them and fight them on because it's less beneficial to have no tenants there and let that building go to hell than to have a little bit of wiggle room to make both parties happy.
That's what I looked at this overlay, giving us that opportunity. Now, at first I thought it would go through the planning commission, but if it goes through the council, that's fine. But I really like this idea because I think we gotta be flexible.
Well, so the TOD would go through the planning commission. You'd treat it like any other rezoning that you might deal with. So that would go to the planning commission first for your public hearing?
What would go through the planning commission?
The overlay district. Like as you're considering an overlay district for either individual parcels or a couple, and we're having this more future-oriented vision for these properties, those would be treated as a rezoning. So they would come to the planning commission and then they would go to the council for their final approval.
Well, so if we do this overlay district, it's gonna include half of our villages and our buildings in town. We don't want them as part of the overlay, do we?
No, we don't.
Like you're now the town. I mean, you got one building here, you got one over here, across the street, over here, Larry's there.
So we can do it two ways as we move through the adoption, assuming we wanna move forward with something like this. We can put the tool in the ordinance and then when the property owners are ready, they can say, hey, I really wanna make use of this TOD tool. And let's describe the boundaries then and describe those boundaries almost on a parcel-specific application. Or we can sit down as the planning commission now and say, here are the locations where we want this TOD to be applied and adopt an update to the zoning map while we're adopting that mechanism into the ordinance.
That might be the best for us.
I think that that gives you, that way gives you a bit more control to limit it to specific properties. It also could limit you in the future if, say, somebody were to purchase one of these properties and want to combine it with an adjacent property and be a bit more flexible. So I, I've gone back and forth and I know Becky and I have talked about some of the pros and cons. And I tend to fall on the side that we should not particularly define them on the map today and we should wait until an applicant is ready to develop. Because the way that this is worded is not that you have to allow a TOD. If somebody proposes one and they say, you know, this is what we have to do, the planning commission and the village council still have a lot of flexibility to say, okay, that's not what we wanna do right now. We don't think it's an appropriate tool today, it just doesn't work. And so then you're not obligated to use that in the future.
What you call the COD?
I'm calling it the TOD.
The COD, okay.
Yeah, transitional overlay.
Transitional overlay district.
So when do the required enhanced design and site plan review requirements? When do those come into view? Like how do we, how are we supposed to think about this if we don't know what those are? We're just giving permission to have those at some point?
Yeah, so the way that that would look if somebody's ready to use it is they would come in and say, okay, I want to use this mechanism for XYZ reasons. And they're gonna come to you with a probably a pretty conceptual proposal. But they're gonna, you would expect that they come with limits of the property, whether it's one parcel or whether it's two parcels or whatever that ends up being. At that time too, they're going to bring to you a list of potential uses that are above and beyond the C2 district uses. And it's at that time where you can then look at those uses that they wanna include in the district and say, okay, now that we know what the uses would be that we're considering, here are the enhanced protections that we need to consider. And so, and then assuming that that overlay district gets approved, then that applicant still has to come to you with a site plan to go through, correct? So they're still going to go through a site plan. And then you have the option or the opportunity to make sure that those enhanced standards are incorporated into their plans.
Would this be a new ordinance or an amendment to an ordinance?
The TOD would be a new article in your zoning ordinance.
So it's on a case-by-case basis? When someone comes in and has a particular situation, that's when the different requirements are, there's a different checklist for that that we're gonna make up ahead of time that?
Yeah, you use that as a, those are rules that are then applicable to just that district as it's defined.
Who makes those rules? How do those rules come to be?
The planning commission and the applicant can work together on it, so.
So each time it's different?
Each time it's different.
So it's an individual look at each particular building, each particular idea of what they wanna do?
It is.
So if we don't define the transitional overlay district, someone comes in and at that time we have to define an area, do we get to redefine an area for every new applicant that comes to whom we could apply the transitional overlay district option? And how is that different than just hand-hucking bad planning, special land use permit, special land use permit, special land use permit, special land use permit?
That's a good question. Right now, you are stuck with, if somebody comes in, their uses just don't fit. And so they either have to find somebody where the uses fit or they are stuck, they leave it empty, right? They can't make any progress. This is a similar concept to a planned unit development where a project does not necessarily fit into any existing zoning and it becomes almost, almost a negotiation, but an offered negotiation by the applicant. You know, there are some instances where it's not bad planning to make those allowances when you can continue to protect all of the adjacent neighbors and you can continue to ensure that you are not just skirting the zoning because somebody doesn't fit.
Yeah, and I totally understand, yeah, I understand how the transitional overlay district works, but my question is specifically to the defining it as we go scenario you proposed. Now, I'm not saying that's not the best plan of attack because I completely understand why we shouldn't go ahead and define it. You've got spots all over that it could apply to and we might not need to even worry about them if they're gonna stand as-is. But again, how do you define the district after your first applicant comes in? You can just define it for right then, for them, it's right here. Here's the transitional overlay district. And then a new applicant comes in and we can say, okay, well, we're gonna start a new transitional overlay district. I guess I'm just, I feel like that we're still gonna be, in essence, granting special land use permits, but, you know, if this is.
They're just more flexible then, than the.
They offer more flexibility, but not in choosing how we apply them unless we define an area. But I'm not saying that's, these are just thoughts as they come to me.
Say that again?
If we don't predefine an area, how are we not in that exact same position where somebody can accuse us of applying it too subjectively?
Well.
Just as it happened with the situation that we got here, that's all.
We're not gonna put in new buildings and say, now you're part of the overlay district and you could now be 50 feet away from a home and all that. And this is, this is for recognizes that we have existing buildings. Not that they're gonna get bigger or anything, but existing buildings that may not conform to our latest master plan in code of ordinances.
So I guess would we ever tell somebody who came to apply for this use of the TOD, no, no, you don't count, this can't be a TOD? How do we approach those situations if we don't have a predefined area?
They have to be coming to use one of those buildings.
Which would indicate we have a predefined area or at least some buildings in mind. You know what I'm saying about, and this is a question for you because obviously you're the expert. That's my initial, my immediate question.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you're hitting exactly on the benefit of why you would define those. But I think that I like the additional flexibility of incorporating additional properties in because it can help encourage an update of those old buildings to something that is more in line with what we want. You know, sort of kinda skirting around Mark's property a little bit. But if there were ways in which his, if we had this tool in place and he had proposed it, I think there are ways in which we could encourage maybe some aesthetic improvements to the building or define very focused uses that would help transition from its industrial use to a more commercially oriented. Maybe the front of the building becomes offices and the rear is used for industrial or, you know, any sort of thing where if you wanted to start incorporating maybe the house to the south as an office towards the space. You know, that gives a lot more flexibility as you consider a specific application because I don't think that we're going to be able to anticipate every geographical limitation on the property.
Now, do you write this ordinance for us?
I think it's already been written.
Man, I don't think we're gonna write it.
I already have the draft for you, yeah.
Second to last page.
Maybe Christine Montserrat, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we'll go with what Brian's doing.
So the concern that I have, if I'm understanding what I've read here in the conversation, is you're looking at doing each individual applicant in a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
So doesn't that become problematic if there's no uniformity? Where one applicant will complain, well, I wanna do this, you're not allowing me to do this, but you allow that person to do this and that's not right?
Mitigating liability, it's high on priority.
We're back at square one.
That's, because that's what got us here in this first place. We wanna mitigate liability where we're in that situation to be accused of bad planning. So that's the only reason that question immediately pops up is how can we be sure that this is perceived as entirely fair?
Yeah.
That's why I was a little confused about the whole going to just having bounced a ZBA and let them decide it. They can go thumbs up, thumbs down, and end it right there. So that's where I'm kind of a little confused with the whole big picture.
Yeah, and I think that's a little bit more reactionary. And quite honestly, in terms of a use variance, you've got a little bit, maybe less, less power from your standpoint when somebody's coming to you and saying, I wanna reoccupy this building, just let me do it, I need my use variance. Whereas if they're coming and they say, okay, I wanna use this use with the overlay district, you can say, okay, you wanna do that use? Maybe we'll consider that, but you're going to have to meet these additional standards moving forward. And the goal being that you're going to transition towards something we want. You're providing more options rather than just considering the one specific use that they want.
So why do we need, why do we need both? If the transitional overlay district is gonna give us all the flexibility that we could ever imagine, why do we need a use variance at all?
Because we, the use variance is not just intended to be used in C2. It's going, it is a tool that could be used throughout the village. And so in contrast, the TOD is specifically to be used, as it's written at least, or as I have it proposed, that it can only be used in the C2 district for our intended transition from all the surrounding uses to the central business uses.
So that gives it by nature some definition, even if we apply it, right?
The TOD.
Yes, okay, that makes sense. Because any citizen asking about this transitional overlay district is going to hear the word district and immediately say, where is that? And so to have no definition other than, well, we'll apply it as needed, kinda seems insufficient. But just to say it all takes place within C2, that helps me a lot be able to back up this idea as something that we can stand by.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. And as it's written, I do have it just applicable to C2.
I need that big map still. There used to be a giant map and I.
Sorry.
But it is something, just something for thought and idea of us saying, well, it could take place anywhere within this district. Or maybe there is another, I know there's a couple other little ones that we might consider of saying it could be applied in these areas, just so there's, yeah. Yeah, might be worth looking at.
Look familiar?
Vaguely.
It used to be, right?
I know. Oh, sorry, no, you're fine, you're fine. I need a touchscreen on my laptop, I'm jealous. Yeah, the C2 is so limited in geographic area that I'm okay with that. And the way that I have like the purpose and intent in the permitted uses section of this draft, it's so focused on, we wanna use the underlying C2 uses for permitted and special approval land uses. So those are going to be the basis for why we would be flexible here or how we would be flexible here. But then any additional land uses being based specifically on the history of that property, that's the other key piece to this, I think, is that it gives us the power to say, if somebody wants to come in and, you know, they wanna put a bowling alley in those buildings, well, there's no historical precedent for that, so it's probably not the type of use that we wanna include in this overlay.
Actually, there is a historical, we had a bowling alley right now, right with the printwear of it, it was a bowling alley.
Maybe there you go. So which begs the question, I didn't see addressed, or if I did, correct me if I'm wrong. So let's say we do the, we opt for the transitional overlay district. We try to use your suggestion of using a carrot and stick approach where we're trying to. we're trying to incentivize people to go in a general direction. What happens if/when the person back or balks on following through? And they start going out with a litany of excuses of, well, I can't do it because of X, Y, and Z. And this kind of goes back to what was mentioned before, where the run of the land caused a big problem. Is there any remedies that we can use where that could be rescinded, revoked? Can we go after them legally, monetarily? Because obviously, if they're gonna be playing games, it's not in our best interest to even consider this without something to ensure that people that are going to be coming to us for approval will not double back on their agreements.
Aren't there provisions, just couldn't we make provisions just like there are for the SAU, to where if they don't follow through with the site plan, if they approved stuff with X amount of time?
Then they're in violation.
Yeah, we almost treat it, actually, be treating it exactly like a conditional rezoning, where it's tied to a specific plan. I think that's a good recommendation, good suggestion, because then you can say, it puts a little bit more burden on the applicant, because they have to have a full plan prepared for you, but you could tie that, the use of this district to a specific site plan.
Because of getting a better feel for what you're proposing, that's just one mind-made concern. My main concern is, okay, we're trying to be accommodating, but don't have it where we're accommodating and the other party's not reciprocating. Because of not reciprocating, what's the point?
Yeah.
Well, you write up your agreement. You know, but never this reciprocation, you're, you know.
Well, if we say that we'll, we'll agree to the traditional overlay district use variance for X property, conditional on the applicant does X, Y, and Z, and if they don't conform with X, Y, and Z within a certain timeframe...
I'm not sure that, to me, it's not like such a give and take. It's that we have certain requirements. We've looked at the business they wanna put in there, and we don't see it as a problem for that area. First off, you see it's a problem, then, then that's another thing. But we look at that, we don't see it as a problem. But then when we look at our ordinance, we say, well, we're not 500 feet away, or whatever it's supposed to be, we're, we're only 50 feet away. So we're not asking him to give any concession, we're just saying, we think it's okay to have your business in there, and it can be 50 feet or whatever, you know, it, you know, they, they can't put their business in there, even though we know that it violates our ordinance. That's why we're using the overlay here.
But the give and take is that you can stipulate that he can't work after 6 o'clock, or that he's got to put screening up by the, that's the give and take. We can put conditions on him doing that business there.
Well, yeah, that, that type of thing.
So what, what recourse do we have? Same violations, fines, just like any other?
Yeah.
I would assume that if they violate an agreement of any kind...
That's a really slippery slope, though. You know, when you start putting too many conditions on, there better be strong, strong reasons.
Well, that's part of...
Don't operate your shop after 6:00 PM on a weeknight next to residential homes. It's not, it happens. It's what, people have been through this before, here.
But you know what? When we've had our public hearings, like Mark's building, I'd bring it up, because that's one that's had the most, you know, the other ones have had long time businesses. We have our public hearings, nobody comes. Now, every resident within how far?
300 feet.
300 feet gets a letter. So all those people within 300 feet, if they had a problem, you know, none of them came. Not even called, say, I can't come, but we really object to this.
Does there ever notice a public hearing for when we're gonna apply the transitional overlay district?
Yeah.
And if we do this ordinance, we'll have a public hearing. Not a public meeting, but a public hearing.
Do you share?
But I think your point is a good one, in terms of tying it to a specific site plan, I think it, it would give you some teeth to say, if you, if you're not actually implementing this specific plan, we're not on board, but...
We have those teeth anyhow, when we approve them going in there with this business, yes. These things need to be done for you to go in there with this business.
Yeah, you do.
But you said it's the village council that makes the final decision.
Well, we'll treat it, we would treat it as a rezoning, an update to your zoning map, yep. So it would be, it would go here, and then to village council.
Each individual business, if we don't define...
Each use of the overlay district.
So like they...
So who actually sets those conditions? Us, or the village?
You, in that case, are making a recommendation to the council.
To the council, and they...
You can provide them a list of, hey, we think these conditions are how you should approve this. Now, they can, they may modify...
So then in turn, who decides what to do if they, if the business doesn't follow through with these conditions? Is that, does that come back in lay-on planning, or is that something?
It goes to your code enforcement official.
Yeah, it goes to...
Yeah. So he's gonna start writing them tickets until he goes to court, and, but that's really different than any other thing.
The recommendation of the planning commission is an important thing for the village council.
Oh, absolutely. They've always, they've always looked at that. So they apply to planning, um...
What?
The applicant would apply to planning, and then we would consider it, there would be a public hearing, because it's a rezoning.
Correct.
And then we would make a recommendation, and that goes to council, and they're the final decider. That would be the process.
Yeah, yeah. Now, in other cases where, this is essentially the same process as like a planned unit development, like I mentioned before, and I do have instances where it goes to planning commission, to council, and then the final site plan then comes back to the planning commission, so that if there are any specific items, maybe that council adds that need to be addressed, they can all be put onto that final site plan. So you would get another crack at the site-specific details rather than the use details, and that's an option that we have.
So they would have to come to us first? And they have a whole nother, they have to wait for a village meeting and go to the village council? Then it would have to come back to us again, so another month later before they could come and see us?
If you do it that way. I think it all kind of depends on how, how much we think council is going to really change any recommendations that you have.
I'm pretty sure that in most cases, the council's gonna take the planning commission's recommendation, you know. There's very few times over the years that we, that we have...
Where they've buttered heads with anything?
It was a couple times.
Yeah, because really, uh...
My...
They're more concerned with, is this an, is this a use that we should be considering? Really, it's probably their bigger role in this, whereas defining the specific screening requirements and parking requirements and all of those sorts of things.
Right.
It's almost like it should go the other way around. Like, they should decide, big picture, is this worth considering? And then we should nitpick all the teeny-tangy, itty-bitty things, just to, I'm just looking for ways to make it efficient.
Well, and that's the rationale for the communities who say, planning commission holds their hearing, council's holding, making the final decision. Those two steps are the use steps, or we're really considering the use.
So we're not identifying any buildings, but we'll apply the TOD as we see it applicable.
Well, as, as anybody gets stuck. So, I mean, it's feasible that one of these building owners is just sitting on a property and they can't find a tenant for their, they can't find a tenant that fits the existing zoning today, right? They're just stuck. They can't find a commercial user in this industrial building, because the building doesn't fit, it's not appropriate for the use. So they come to the planning commission and say, hey, look, this is my vision. I need, I need you to consider maybe allowing some bowling alley uses in this building, or indoor recreation, whether it's, you know, a gymnasium, or, you know, whatever it ends up being. I'll call it a recreational use. Can we add that to our list of permitted uses for this site? Because I have this big building, it's downtown, it's the perfect use. It still gets people excited to come downtown, you know, sports teams can go get an ice cream after they're done. It's, it's a good transitional use. So in that instance, then you say, okay, yeah, that use makes sense, and this is where we figure out if you wanna do the site plan at that time, or if you wanna do the site plan after. But you look at those uses, you say, the uses are good, we're happy with the uses, but we think that you need to screen this building, or you need to start making exterior improvements. We don't want the sheet metal siding anymore, maybe put some brick on it so it matches the other buildings, you know. Where you can stay, and you can make it, you can make a good faith, hey, this would really help a transition from this industrial building to our downtown. It hits a lot of the health, safety, and welfare, and the character standards that you really want to consider as the planning commission. Those are the kind of gives and takes that would be appropriate in that instance. Then, if both sides agree, you know, the applicant has prepared the plans, they've, they've met all of your criteria, then it'd be appropriate to hold the, you can hold the public hearing at any point during this, but then make your recommendation to council, and council approves it.
So you're working on the ordinance now, you said? Or you have a...
We have a copy.
You have a copy of the draft. I'm gonna make some changes based on our discussion tonight, for sure.
Yeah, I don't have that. Do I have that?
So our next step is to hold a public hearing?
Your next step would be to hold a public hearing on the draft ordinance, yeah.
Are there any other rural village-style communities that have the traditional, or transitional overlay district like this one? Like Romeo, Richmond, something? Because it, and it's not to say my feelings about it one way or the other, I'm just curious, because I know the report had mentioned like Novi as a transitional overlay district. It's like apples and oranges, as far as comparing communities. So I'm just curious if you have any, like, off the top of your head, ideas of local communities that are more similar to a population of 1,700 residents that also have a transitional overlay district? Just out of curiosity.
Not off the top of my head. A lot of communities, small and large, will use the planned unit development as their means to do the same thing.
Got it.
Yeah, I can't think of a specific example off the top of my head. But I will say that a lot of smaller downtowns, a lot of smaller downtowns do not have one larger industrial user, uses that really cause problems. They might have one or two, but they don't have as many as you do. But they also, more modern zoning ordinances will allow a lot more of these flexible tools, so that it doesn't become a problem. Like, right now, the ordinance is so rigid, there, there's just no flexibility whatsoever.
And this, this gives us that flexibility to work with business owners better, which was exactly what we had needed in the instance where this whole situation was born from. I don't disagree that it's a good solution. Are there any potential drawbacks?
I, I think the big, it's not even big, I think the thing to be cautious about in using a tool like this, or even opening it up, is kind of what you had hinted at before, which was spot zoning. Are we giving preferential treatment to a particular user? And applied in good faith, it is a perfect tool. Where you wanna be cautious is the special conditions that get put into an overlay district like this, or applied to a specific property are, they are there for a reason specific to that property. It's not something that is...
Can squirreled away books say, yeah, we're gonna open an adult bookstore next year, because we have the transitional overlay district permit to use it as a bookstore, so this is what we're gonna do? And then we've lost our capability to say, you can't do that here?
Right.
Can that happen?
Uh, no, you'd have control over that.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's, that would be the biggest problem, is people abusing it and using it to roll in businesses that we did not approve or intend, or envision for this community. But if we're protected against that, then I think that sounds...
You know, just to give you all the history, now, the building next door to West Larry's was built as a garage by the Wood Brothers, Keith and Lawrence Wood. Park Electric was a Ford dealership. I don't know if that was the original use of the building, but when I was a kid, it was a Ford dealership. Bowley's, the next building down, again, I don't know what the original use was, but it was a John Deere dealership at one time. Paterax was, was built by the Estes's as a garage, for mechanical, you know.
High school?
No. It was built, at one time, the school didn't use it, but it was just a, just like Larry's, it was, is a garage, that's what the Estes's had. There were John Paterax buildings. Izzo's building was also part of the Armada Oil and Gas. There used to be a big, big tank out there by Ben DeLucky's, and that was a warehouse. There was like tires in there, and I think they, I don't know if they did oil changes and things, but it was kind of a warehouse-type thing, I believe. But again, these buildings have been there since the 50s or, or before.
Well, and this, the TOD gives us governing ability to make sure that we set provisions as needed.
But, you know, they were commercial buildings, some of them at one time.
Yeah, because at one point, this, I know, this community is, it's crazy to think of how you see this community has gotten so much larger, and I'm seeing it as about to get so much larger yet, over the next, it, businesses are gonna turn over, you're gonna see a lot of people, in my opinion, come here to own businesses.
These, these buildings still need flexibility that, you know, like a new building wouldn't.
It doesn't have to be used for its original usage, it has to be used with, in alignment with the village's plan, master plan.
Like, when I, when I, as I was building, I saw an example, I picture earlier, we were able to put the TOD in place for him.
We wouldn't have been in that situation where we had to have the recommendation that it doesn't fit. We wouldn't have been able to...
Right, you were, you were happy. You made the decision no, and it was the correct decision in my opinion.
We had, it came from your recommendation. We had to, because it didn't fit in our plan. It was a no, but with the transitional overlay district.
You could do that, but you could also say, like, you know, you're right on the edge of downtown, you're right on Fulton, we need to see some physical improvements, maybe some glass on the front of the building, so it starts to mimic, you know, the, the feel of the rest of the district.
You're moving forward towards the master plan.
Right, we're, we're transitioning towards it. Yes, you can still do some of these uses that have been in there for a long time, but make some accommodations to help move us in the right direction, so that your next tenant might, might be a little bit closer and closer.
Right, right.
Find it?
Yeah, yeah. I, I got this here, but...
Let me steal mine back.
Oh, I, I can get one. You take that back. I could have gotten one. I don't have that. I'm gonna get my adjustment here.
Which goes to my next question. So how is that can reconcile with the master plan when that gets brought up again?
Well, we need, we're overdue for a master plan update regardless, so we, we do need to put that on the short-term horizon. But I think it does help us with elements of the master plan that we had in place back in 2012. So I pulled that up, and, you know, it talks a lot about encouraging business incubators, like making use out of some of those existing buildings. Says that commercial redevelopment will likely require the redevelopment of existing properties, and a mixed-use approach for land uses in these areas should be considered. It also says that a mixture of neighborhood and specialty commercial uses, professional offices, residential uses should be encouraged. And then, see, there's one other I wanted to talk about. Opportunities for the redevelopment of industrial land uses shall be explored. These opportunities may not develop in the short term unless the village takes a proactive collaborative approach with the owners and operators of the industrial use. with the owners and operators of the industrial uses. So to me, what we're talking about in terms of a regulation is exactly what that master plan says that we should be doing. And we just don't have those regulatory tools in place right now to do it. So I don't see that it's out of alignment with the master plan. I do think that the master plan, like there are only, there are select few statements in the master plan today that really give us a lot of flexibility or accurately describe what downtown is today. And so I think that's where we would need to focus on a master plan update is, hey, let's take a more realistic approach on what we have and what we can expect and things like that. Things like the incubators, I think they're great ideas, but it might be, it might be a bit too far down the line in terms of a reality or a realistic approach in a lot of instances. Maybe not, but I think we should redefine a bit what our vision for downtown is. And the downtown plan itself is, coming up on 20 years old, that's, you know, a lot has changed or in some instances hasn't changed, but could have. And so... Did I answer your question? I don't remember.
I don't think it was, it was more about how it lined up with the master plan, but I think that they're able to coexist. They're not mutually exclusive.
Yeah. That was what I got from it too, so.
This just gives us a chance to overrule the master plan, kind of. I mean, just a...
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's overruling. I think it's...
Allows more flexibility than what I think.
Yeah, I think it's building on that, yeah. I mean, if the vision 10 years ago was, hey, let's be flexible with these spaces and now here we are and we have an opportunity to, we were presented with a real world, hey, your ordinance is not flexible. Do you need to change it? And I think now's a good time to make that change, but...
So now we're looking at that we need to hold a public hearing. And is this something that we would be able to set for our, if approved, for our July meeting? Can we do something this quickly?
I can have these put in place. One question I would have is, the attorney needs to put it into ordinance format, but I don't know, does he normally do that for council or for planning commission?
Yes, for council.
Okay, so I can make changes based on what we've talked about tonight and have those ready in advance at that meeting. That's not a problem.
And in thinking back, what we decided before and then changed our decision, a public hearing, we should have gone forward with it instead of canceling it to, I believe we said indefinitely in those notes, or what we said. A public hearing does not mean that this becomes what we have. A public hearing means that the public comes here and they have the opportunity to give us their thoughts. We rarely have public at our public hearings, but it will all be posted. They will have a chance to come and tell us their thoughts on this. We'd be able to hear maybe disagreements that they might have. And that might help us before we put it to a vote that this is what it is. The public hearing does not mean this becomes what works.
How do we, is, do we only mail it? Is that the only way we disseminate the public hearing?
For this particular thing, we would not mail it.
It would be posted.
It would be posted. It would be in the newspaper.
Got it.
It would be on the website.
Now, when you're saying newspapers, like put a, like a legal ad in there? Or is it something you can talk to one of the reporters?
Depends on their mood, but it, we do have to, we do have to post it as an ad, but sometimes if they have room, they would put a small little article saying that this is what the village of Armada Planning Commission is considering.
And it's on the website?
It will be, it will be posted on the website.
Yeah, it goes on the website? Just trying to think of how, if we want public comment.
No, you want to pick up the public hearing.
Yeah, we want people, we're not saying get as many people.
I genuinely think most people are still missing it, is what I think. Even though we do all those things. That's not that it's hard to get the information, but if you really want to blast people with it, it's going to have to hit Facebook. And I don't know what the, are you allowed to do that? Can you do that? Is it unprofessional? I have no idea. However, if we truly want people to notice it.
What do you want to do?
Put it on some sort of social media, like if you truly want public comment. And that's just my...
But you don't want the public comment that's on Facebook.
You get too much comment.
Exactly. This is what I need to know is why don't we do that? And that's the answer, but I genuinely think the reason we don't have a ton of public comment, speaking for me, I don't, I wouldn't have...
Too much misinformation is the problem with like Facebook.
Well, I don't think it means that website, but there's no, there's no official.
Official page.
There's no official village Facebook page or Twitter page.
Use social media to your aim.
People know that there's a public hearing. They know they can come in. And if there was a problem coming in, most of them aren't afraid to pick up the phone and...
We have had people here for public hearings before and very opposed to what was going on, but it worked out well. But it gave them the opportunity to come here so that we could hear what they had to say. If it's something they want to make a comment on, we have definitely had people here.
If people want to know, they will make it, their business to know. The information is well available.
Right.
You know, it just gives people the opportunity to, you know, say what they feel and ask us to consider...
Speaking from my generation standpoint, we are not accustomed to seeking information. We are accustomed to having information filtered into our palm. So that's my only suggestion, just speaking from people.
That's one of the problems.
35 and under, we are, I hate to use the term lazy, but we're used to having it filtered right into an ad. If we mention that we're having a bonfire, I will see an ad for lighter fluid and fake log or whatever else. So I'm just saying, as far as like how we disseminate information, anybody interesting in updating that, I could totally spearhead a project like that if we're interested.
Well, there are the elections on Facebook now.
It's not necessarily right or wrong. It is what it is.
The village itself will probably never have an official Facebook page.
And I won't blame them for not wanting one. It is a whole can of worms. I'm just trying to decide how to get the best net of the public.
I think so.
You can put this on Channel 6 too and put any information you want on it, on the voting board. Any questions, call the village office. You can just put that in any format you want.
Yeah, it's, the information is there. It's just, you know, I feel like people don't, you're right, people need to make the effort to want to know. Even if we go through all the trouble of getting ourselves digital communicating, it might not improve public participation whatsoever. And it might only encourage terrible participation, which is...
And typically, the only ones that are going to come are those that object to it.
Right.
People don't come and say, wow, this is a great idea.
No, 100%.
Or, never. But if they say, yo, you can't do this, my business is next door to that and I couldn't do this and I, you know.
That's not...
That's who comes.
It's not a time for us to argue with them.
No, it's just us to take their comments.
It's our job to listen to the input.
Is there any other input?
Given that we do have in place ways to let the public know that we are having a public hearing, we will look into further.
Maybe social media was not the right suggestion, but some sort of, some sort of way to make sure that it's noticeable to people who don't. We see it out.
But for this particular moment, we really need to decide if we are going to move forward with having the public here and giving the public an opportunity to come here and sound off what they feel on this.
My question is, do you want to meet the public hearing the next meeting or in two meetings or something?
That's what I'm asking. Do, and you, Brian said we could put this together as quickly as the July meeting?
Well, you know, the July meeting, well, yeah, this is just the third, so we're not... I guess we could do it for July meeting.
Because we already got fair time coming up.
That'd be the August meeting, but... Well, either way, I never know where I'm going to be, but...
All right. I'll make a motion to put on the agenda for the July...
July 6th.
Thank you. July 6th meeting, a public...
Let me stop one second.
Go.
That's a Tuesday night. Are you available?
I have a conflict that evening.
That's not a Tuesday night.
It is a Tuesday night.
It's because of the 4th of July.
Actually, they're too close.
Our Monday, the 7th.
Because of the 4th, we moved ours and ours is a Tuesday night.
Brian, can you do the 7th?
I can do the 7th, yeah.
So can we adjust our meeting to July 7th on Wednesday?
So we need to do that before we set a public hearing for the date of the meeting, correct? Is there anybody that's opposed to the July meeting the 7th?
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes.
It's a Wednesday, concert of the park.
That direct conflict with concert of the park.
Dave can't make it because of the cancer.
Hey, that's the...
It is one of my favorite nights of the week, I know.
8/2?
8 is fine.
8/2?
The what?
Moving on to the August meeting. 8/2?
August 2.
August, okay.
Which is on Monday night.
That will be Monday.
Brian cannot make the first Monday.
That's the Sagi Balin Boys. You can't, even you would have had the Sagi Balin Boys.
Brian had a previous commitment on the first Mondays of the month, so...
Okay.
So never make... So is, didn't we say July, July 7th doesn't work for everybody?
Well, July 7th was a problem over there.
Well, if you want to make it July 7th, but...
What about the 8th?
That's the Sagi Balin Boys.
Could have been searched at the 8th.
And the 8th year is going to be, we'll have this room?
Sure.
I'm not sure what I can make.
So are you going to oppose with July 8th?
I'm supposed to be out of town that day at a ball tournament with my grandson, Rupus Club. So make it whenever you want. Don't make it around me.
Make a motion to...
8 is okay, all right.
Thank you. Everybody cool? Are we cool? Are we cool? Okay, everyone's cool. Make a motion to put on the agenda for the July 8th meeting at, do we need the time?
7:30.
7:30 PM. Public hearing regarding the use, the use variance and transitional overlay district for the village of Armada.
Coverage?
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
And again, that's July 8th at 7:30.
So we have, make sure you make the presentation that we have changed the...
Did I do the 8? Did I change the date again? All right.
Okay. We are now moving forward to the planning commission bylaws review. Anybody want to open up with this?
Were there any objections over what was already discussed?
Well, you should just start contributing.
Okay.
Go with page one and, anybody got anything on page one?
Because I thought we just had two issues? Or were there more?
Just start, you should go over all of them.
There you go.
Holy matra, how many you got to go over here?
You actually read them all. Does anybody have any issues with anything on page one? Page, the first page.
So there was discussion about section 1D changing shall to may? We're going to go through with that one?
It doesn't, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
That's fine. I mean, it can stay shall.
That would seem like a pretty minor type thing there.
But if it says shall, it has to be done. If it says may, it doesn't have to.
Right.
It's always been viewed in the past that by having them approved and voted on, that they're approved minutes.
So it couldn't be that?
It said it's always been assumed that because they're voted on and approved, that they're approved minutes, but doesn't really matter. But what it is, it is what it is. So anybody have, that's fine, I can save that.
I'm just going over my notes from the previous meeting.
First page is good?
Yes, it's good. Yep, that's fine.
Now we're on the second page.
Everyone good with page 2?
I was wondering about the, if we should add anything about the DDA because the DDA is the responsibility of the plan. We are the DDA now. And we don't have a separate DDA meeting, so should the DDA be represented?
It has to be separate. It has to be, that's why it was separate on the agenda.
But that's not a separate meeting, that's an agenda item on a meeting.
No, it had to be a separate session. Which is why it was set up that way. And the DDA may not always stay with the planning commission.
Right.
Right, well, then we would change the bylaws. I just don't, does, if we have a separate responsibility and the bylaws outline what our responsibilities are, it seems like all responsibilities should be in the rules. It says that this is rules and procedure so that we can facilitate our job. It just seems incomplete, you know?
What do you want to change?
I'm just asking if we should include the DDA in any part of this because the DDA is our responsibility. Should we have separate bylaws for DDA?
It's actually, actually covered, the DDA part is covered under...
The 3H.
Where it says, for form of the duties and responsibilities as requested by council. That's, council's the one that gave it to us, gave it to the planning commission.
The state act for DDAs is pretty robust too, unlike some of the planning acts.
Correct.
And so a lot of the procedures and everything like that are really well-defined in the state act.
Okay, good.
Why do we see one thing?
Page 2?
We don't have a seven member...
No, that's right, we need to change that.
We need that to be changed to five.
Three members of a five-member planning commission. And we also have anything else on the second page? No comments?
So just real quick, so are the three members, which item was that again? 2?
D.
2D?
Coram, three members of a five-member...
There you are, okay.
Also, the zoning ordinance still says that the planning commission has seven members.
I want to say that that needs to change.
Yeah, we've been working on updating that and it kind of gets old.
Right.
Everything final, page 2? Page 3 then? I'm sorry.
No, please.
Page 3?
I think the order of agenda should match what we do. If we like the agenda that we, that we use tonight, then let's just make our F match what we like to do because they're not currently in alignment. Like if we like to always do, where's my agenda? Approval of the agenda before we approve the minutes, then make that match. If, you know, the reports, instead of 10 and 11 and 12, we could, we can combine all those into one, say reports and correspondences. And when there's something, we can just fill in A report, B correspondence, whatever. I would put public comment only before we vote on anything. I think we need one at the end.
Well, I guess you could switch that 4 and 5 around if you want or do it differently here.
Which is why we discussed the shall and may.
Which is fine, just can that just match the outline of what we have for tonight?
Yeah, that's all you have to do.
Obviously, why not?
I don't see a problem.
And then take 10, 11 and 12 and make that be, for 10, do reports and correspondence.
Well, yeah. If the, if I need to make a report to you guys or if it's only part of appeals deeds too or other correspondence, we're not in violation of those things on this.
We've always added those into the chair report.
You had them in if you have some.
Right.
Chair report if we had something.
Well, then, yeah, if you want to just do a chair report, but then you can't, but then there's no option to do other reports if...
Well, there is. Usually the chair would say, does anybody else have...
Have any other business or is there anything that needs to be presented to the board? It's, that's just how we've done it in the past.
Hi, then just make it match.
So to come back to what we have on the, on the sheet tonight, on the agenda, that guideline. And the only, the only, the only comment I'm going to make about old business and new business is, historically, we've done new business first because it's usually a site plan approval, review, whatever, and it's a lot shorter time. So it allows the applicant to not have to sit here and listen through everything else to get to the... to get to their part.
Yeah.
So, and it's never, in my opinion, just my opinion, doesn't need to be designated new business or old business.
It's old business.
It's just business. But that's historically why we've done new business first, instead of going over the old business first, because the old business, things like this.
Yeah, tonight, they would have had to sit through this entire.
Or in the future, when we're doing the zoning ordinance amendments, or the master plan update, they have to sit through all of that as old business before we got to them. So that's why historically we've always done.
So we're going to.
Fair enough.
What, yeah, that sounds good. What are we going to, um?
It's not going to be designated new business or old business. It's, we're going to, we're going to still do the same outline like we've done, and each item will be listed, but new business will come before any of.
You know, again, it just says new business. It doesn't mean you have to say it's new business by saying it's site plan is new business.
That's what I'm saying, it's not going to.
And old business is maybe the bylaw.
It allows you flexibility with how you apply it.
Right, it's just, it's just not going to specifically say new business or old business, but the detail will still be there as this is a site plan approval for this address, this name of that thing.
So what is, it's going to be, we're going to do 1, 2, 3 the same, 4 and 5 are going to switch?
1, 2, 3, yeah, 4 and 5 will switch.
And then 6 is still public comment, 7 is still the same, 8 is going to be business?
Well, it's not going to say public hearing unless we have a public hearing.
Right.
But that's where it would be listed, I guess.
If we have a public hearing, that's where we.
Right, right.
And then, then, so then 8 would be business?
It's just business in general, correct.
Like, if you have a site plan, it would be that, that'd be the new business.
I mean, it can be, it can stay new business, old business, but the agenda isn't going to say new business, site plan 23051 Main Street. It's just going to be, it's just going to be site plan, it just might not be designated as new business or old business.
And then, so 10 is going to be, 10, 11, 10 is going to be, what are we going to do next?
Chair report.
10 is going to be chair report? I mean, it could be.
And if, if the village representative contacts Christie, or contacts Becky, they'll put it on there, or if the zoning board of appeals has something.
I guess it can just say reports, it doesn't really matter.
You know.
Right, because you, yeah.
And then it can be any and all reports.
Yep. And so then, do we want a correspondence too?
That would be what you're going to report on, isn't it?
Well, there's, if it's a, if there's a letter or something that comes in, it's generally passed to, that would be in the other agenda item, in correspondence?
That's where they would present it, I guess.
Reports and correspondence. So, yeah.
You know.
And then adjournment, that's the way it would go?
Yeah.
Yeah, adjournment, we want to keep that as the last thing.
Yeah.
Page three?
We need to get there pretty soon. Page three, or wait, page four are we going to, or we?
No, section.
Section 3, page 3.
That's, that's.
What page we are?
Transmitter.
Okay, we're on four.
Who's texting, that's what I want to know.
You'll be surprised.
The only comment I'd like to make is that, like, I M G, it says training sessions. Every year it's in the budget, they're not always the easiest thing to find, or to find the availability for everybody, so as we can find them and people can go, we do try to utilize them.
Yeah, and the councils are very, very good about approving training if, if you want to go to something. I don't ever recall turning anything down.
Item I is done every year, but it's done by the planning commission as a whole. Item J is also done by the planning commission as a whole. In the January meeting, as a rule, it's presented, everybody looks at it, reviews them, agrees, we amend, we whatever, and then it goes to council. The budget is done by the treasurer, basically, because she handles the money anyways. She does allow any input as to any suggested spending if the money's available. So if there's something that, if we decided that we wanted McKenna to come in and do a training, something in here, or it's an extra top hundred bucks, that's fine, we just have to let the treasurer know to do the budget. There's no plan.
And that's what's happened in the past, you know?
Correct.
Better than whatever.
Because we're not, because we're not doing it?
We rarely don't do the budget, correct.
Okay, so we'll take that.
But you do have input into that.
Yeah, but you can delete that, because we don't develop it. We don't, can do a capital improvement program that's actually handled by council?
Yeah.
So, it says we're supposed to be exempted, but council actually does it, so if we delete it from bylaws, we don't do it.
You don't do it.
Okay, so we're going to stop at J?
I would say.
Okay, cool.
Now we're on page five?
We're on five.
Yep, we're on five.
We don't have a planning consultant?
Right.
Not that it might not be a bad idea, but we don't have one. And just to, another point, number D, this is the part where it says maybe assisted by a professional or village staff is needed, that's how, covers what gets done in the office.
Oh, good idea.
So just leave it unchanged?
Leave that unchanged.
Done.
Next page, anybody? Just the.
But you want to change there?
Nothing.
Yeah, I was going to say, right.
Just change where it says three members of the planning commission.
Right, we've already discussed that.
So, where did, I don't know where for this, excused and unexcused absences, but I've never heard, first of all, I've been on the planning commission about three different times.
At least.
And it's just about, I hardly ever remember somebody just not showing up, they always contact.
Contacted, backing myself.
Before that, they, they couldn't, you know, they couldn't make it. Now, I never had anybody like pat me on the head and say, well, that's okay, you're excused. You know, but I don't like this excused or unexcused.
Given that we don't exactly have people just jumping outside the door to join the planning mission, it is difficult, once the village council goes through a vote and their new people are put in place, it's pulling teeth to get someone to be our liaison. We've never really pointed fingers at, you know, why weren't you here, you should have been at that meeting, and as Dave said, somebody is always contacted.
Barb promised me his word. Barb gave me his word that after the election, I'd be off the planning commission, and here I am.
This is what I mean. I don't have any complaints about your attendance.
I would suggest that I rewrite the bylaws and we have them next week.
That sounds good. You'll go over, we made notes of all the changes we wanted.
I was hoping you would.
Alex, you?
I don't think so, because we're going to accept them next week. We discuss them, I'll retype them up, it'll, or next meeting, and then we'll, I'll give them to everybody to review, and then if they agree, the next meeting, we can accept the bylaws as presented.
Fair enough.
Adopt them, I think is how it would be. Chair report, that's good.
Well, we still did, the bylaws may be amended by a vote of four members of the planning commission.
No, we changed it to three.
We are going to change it to three, too, right.
Chair report?
Play nice.
Any public comment? No. So I believe we are on the chair report, which I think I've covered everything tonight.